Oh, okay.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We would like to go ahead and call our regular board meeting to order of December twenty eighth. And you have agenda in front of us. And we would like to have a call, please. Mrs. Sandiklas, Ms. Rosa.
Our Viva.
Or Lisa. And. So we have a four, just four of us, so we can go ahead and proceed. Okay, the first thing on our agenda is PD number ten, January second, twenty twenty four. And PD number eleven, it was the.
Yes, so these are in our calendar already. Um, January second, Tuesday, right after New Year, is our PD professional development number ten for our teachers. And this will be very special. Um, because, uh, Mr. Joe Sanchez himself is joining us to do the training on pre and post assessment for our teachers.
Oh, that's cool.
This is in line with our school wide action plan because we wanted to finalize our curriculum maps. And we need our teachers to be trained on how to, um, do pre assess, pre and post assessment as we finalize our curriculum maps. Um, PD eleven, which is the, on January fifth, um, it will be more on concentration on our finalizing our narratives for our, um, Cognia report. And, um, we would love for you to attend the trustees and join us, especially on January fifth. Um, second quarter report cards will be released on January five to the parents and the students, both by hard copy and through friend web. Um, digitally. Um, the third one, PTO and presentation, so we, um. Ms. Lou is some kind enough to recognize, um, initiate, initiate a recognition for our, for the Get Healthy Guam Coalition. Because they are our partners, um, when, um, two of our teachers already drafted the, not drafted, created the book, two books. The recent one is, um, on diabetes. And these were, um, taken from our students ourselves. So on, um, January eighteen, which is our PTO, uh, we have made sure that we're inviting Juan Health Coalition. And as our partners, and we will recognize two of our, um, teachers and the students who participated in the, um. Patient of, of the, the two books.
Right, good.
Um, again, yes, Ms. Lou, I would like to give the word to Ms. Lou because she has.
I'll just give a very brief background. As you know, last, I think this year we had in May, um. The Charter School Day at the mall. And I, I presented a copy of the first booklet that was known by students here at the Charter Schools. So what had happened was, the origin of this came about as a result of Renee Vexler. Who is the health educator at Guam Memorial Hospital. But we're both members of the Guam Women's Club, so she asked me, Lou, I have this grant money. That I need to engage students from the, from the, from the school. Can you help me identify two schools that would be willing to? So at that time, Dr. Juan Pat was the CEO. I approached her and she just grabbed that opportunity. I always feel that students, when nurtured, when supported, when encouraged, when inspired. Can give their best if they're given that opportunity. And we're just very grateful that Mr. Franklin Castro, uh, was the leading teacher in this project. And so I'm, I'm very grateful that our students participated in this. So they did their first booklet. The second booklet is on diabetes. From their perspective, from their story, maybe with parents or relatives. Uh, and that is already ready for distribution. And that is why we're recognizing the students who are involved in this project, uh, through the PTO. Because we feel that by, by doing it through the PTO, we will get parents, you know. And I think that the board taking the, uh, the initiative to really recognize these students is very important. That we. We continue to nurture the things that students can do and will do. And with the help of the staff, the teachers, uh, you know, I'm, I'm led to believe that. One Academy Charter School will continue to thrive. And this is really a good news for, um, our accreditation. You know, and that's one of the, the areas that we have to, in this eighteen looks after you. You know, how do we recognize students?
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of achievement and, uh, come there on. So that's a very big background.
Yeah, so. It helps against the write-up, is this, diabetes is one of the major.
Oh, yes, yes. So, uh, Renee and, and, and Mr. Castro are doing the write-up, right? And then Ms. and Ms. Santiago. They're doing the write-up and they are going to, uh, make contacts with the media to provide coverage. Now, I'm not sure, the media normally gets their news at about this time. I'm not sure whether they'll do a coverage live on that particular day at night. Uh, but I'm sure maybe there can be like a follow-up, right? Because that's their news time. Six o'clock is nine. But anyway, uh, coverage will be made to ensure that students are, are recognized. And that the school, and again, this is a component of the accreditation process. What partnerships do the school have with, uh, like community organization? And this is really a, a real plus for our accreditation.
Yes, yes, really.
But we're not doing it for accreditation. We're doing it because we are really recognizing the students who are really achieving and, and helping. Uh, the school get a good image of what they're all about, what are they learning? How are they learning? How are they demonstrating that they're, they are, uh, implementing what they're learning into action? So that's a very big background. Uh, you'll get to meet, um, Renee, uh, on that night. Because we want to recognize her.
And the A.
We, yeah. We also are going to recognize all the sponsors.
Oh, wow.
And I know all, all those are community and K and that are all the community organizations, you know. Yeah, right there. One Regional Medical Center, Subotic Tower, One Economic Development Authority, One Memorial Hospital Authority, GMTC. And Cora Guam Academy, you know. They also need to be recognized for supporting it, yeah. Thank you.
Really good. Any questions? So we will then, oh, yes, so.
Recognize.
Recognize Mr. E. that is present, thank you. We will then continue to unfinished business executive committee report. This is just, uh, I guess we're gonna take a hold on this one. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting of November twenty first, twenty twenty three, and it's in our packet. So I'd like to hear a motion.
I'm in the motion.
Okay. If you're a second to the motion. Okay, second to the second. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. E.? Myself, okay, motion carried. Okay, the, the second one is on the approval of minutes for the special meeting on December first, twenty twenty three. Can I hear a motion, please? Okay, title of speaking, the motion is set second to that. To, this, 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 okay. All those in favor, please say Mr. E.? Now, yes, yes, okay, okay, motion carried, yes. Okay. Accreditation committee report, so I will be attending the meeting now every Wednesday, right? You know, I've been really, very tied up with my husband being sick and my son, so now I would have to dedicate my time now to school. Okay. Uh, so anyone that wants to join me is gonna be on Wednesday for accreditation. And I'm glad that Ms. Sandiklas was the one re-handling this while I was unable to do it. Thank you very much.
I'll work in partnership with you.
I'm so happy, thank you very much. Okay. Human Resources Committee.
Yes. The management of the school has selected among the candidates, a personal officer. Who will not be on board until February, Mrs. Santiago. And also has selected a procurement officer, right? And when would that person?
That's already, she's, um, that's Ms. Jamie with her qualification. She completed all her, um, courses, so she's the one who's qualified and she's been doing, oh, yeah.
Hi, Jamie.
Okay.
We have interviewed, uh, a lot of applicants and the qualifications is to make sure that they have the modules for procurement. And she completed all, um, uh, both, both modules, which is required by OPA. Um, but that also is, has completed the modules. However, she's been, the two of them has been wearing two different hats. Uh, as acting procurement and, um, so now we have a specific one. Therefore, um, she, um, the new HR would be taking over.
Okay, are we looking at a replacement for Ms. Jamie?
Uh, not as yet, because that's a, um, haunting assistant, which she still does, she's handling those.
Is there a, a, a recognition or certification that we can post that she's an official, uh, license or something?
Yes, we do, and we submit that to OPA as well, because that's.
No, but I mean, over here.
We can do that, uh, it's in their records.
No, this one, because when, when they, uh, on the subject of audits, you know how they are.
Shall we, shall we see her?
Yeah. That's his partner, his monitor.
She's on the Zoom, Ms. Ms. uh, Ms. Jamie.
I hope you're feeling okay.
Oh, that's not the face.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, my apologies. Uh, eleven twenty-two, uh, did you guys already call the, uh, called the meeting to order?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, just please proceed. Thank you, Trustee Rosie, thank you so much. I'm a little bit under the weather, so, uh, uh, please go ahead.
Okay, I hope that you're gonna be feeling so much better.
Yes, thank you so much.
So those positions, uh, the positions are filled.
Yes.
And the vacant positions are special education teacher, guidance counselor, and on-call substitute.
Yes. And the, um, yes, and the regular, um, secondary.
So I think at the last meeting, I suggested that really we need to go beyond the website of advertising vacant positions. Yeah. And that's why I'm truly an, an advocate of working closely with the mayors and we'll make that happen.
I'm posted in the mayor's office.
And just post them all.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we will proceed then, Finance Committee. Trustee E.?
There is this attachment in your, I mean, uh, near fore.
Yes.
Which stipulates everything to do there. Let's see what has been released and what we have remained. On the far end, on the far right-hand side, that shows the running balance today and the problem amount dispersed or released. On each of the specific date since October all the way to the first, I mean, uh, the December.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This is the first quarter only that's right, because started October, November, December. So they still have, we're happy enough to cover already.
All the, all the five point seven will be, because spent, spent in the fourth.
Yeah, nine twenty-four.
And you've been, be, you've been a very good steward of public money, so we'll maintain that.
Yeah, it's proven over time, so we're proud of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah.
And our. Yeah, I'm gonna say it keeps closing I and O too, right? And thanks to Mr. Uh, E. for really following through also.
How, how are we doing in monitoring the requisitions that have not been acted upon for, um, official purchase order?
Oh, for, for locally, we don't have any, as, because this is, um, up-to-date, real-time. So every time we have this, so this is actually real-time for local.
Madam, do you have a question? You okay?
No, we're good, uh. Okay, all current, I, I'm, I'm, I want, I want to go to the audit after the, uh, the Finance Committee report. Let's go ahead and, and anymore, I'm, I do not have any question right now, thank you, thank you, CEO.
Okay. We will then, uh, again, so we have our report from, uh, Trustee E.? Okay, we will go then to the Audit Committee, Trustee E.?
Oh. Yeah. What do you call that, uh, look, address the issue? Well, first of all, as far as the audit is, work in progress, it's been pretty good so far with, uh, Ms. B. And the, the one I'm currently going to address is the Management Discussion and Analysis, the MDA. And I read bits and pieces of it. The critical part was, it's highlighted and it's been addressed. And it appears that it's well-presented, that's the main thing. And I checked some of the additions and make sure the math is, is correct. So, uh, I have no questions, uh, board members, do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I thought the Chairwoman.
Yes, she's gonna answer, go ahead, yeah.
Did the MDA, uh, did we complete the MDA, the MDA, DNA we submitted together with the audit, uh, Trustee, uh, E.? The MDA, the MDA, yeah, okay, because I, I haven't been able to do the email thing. So, uh, I know there was some information about the MDA, uh, to be a part of the audit. That's done and completed.
Yes.
Yes, uh, may I?
Go ahead.
Just wondering, because I, I keep forgetting, how much are?
Well, right now, the, the final draft came out and, uh, the critical part, uh, all highlighted. And that's what's been reflected also on, um, the audit itself. We're just waiting for the audit report. And hopefully wishing I get a consistent, uh, unqualified opinion, meaning a clean opinion. And it's a, gonna be a benchmark, how many, already years? Five or six years in a row?
Four.
Okay.
Four years, yeah. More consecutive.
Yeah, we got all, all, yeah, so that's it.
And we will continue that.
Yeah, it will be released on the mid-part of, uh, January, ma'am, the mid-part of January.
So we're on, on target, right? We're on target. I believe it's January four. January four, it's, yeah.
In our.
Mid, mid, January.
Actually, January thirty or February twenty-nine. But, um, yesterday, according to our meeting with the OPA and the Ernst and Young, um. Mr. Um, DJ Cruz is very pleased that we are ahead of schedule, so I, we submitted the.
All right.
There, we wanted to do it even before the, the January. And this is top of our.
Happy New Year!
Really?
Yeah.
Good for us. The original schedule is February twenty-seven.
It's a good reflection.
We arranged it yesterday.
You know, it's, it's ties in, it's a, it ties in, just my opinion, it will tie in with the USD and, um, with, with our solidifier.
We want to.
All the way through that.
Yes.
Trustee E. like you had a question?
No, I was just asking, how much are we paying Ernst and Young?
Okay.
Has they been fully paid?
No, no, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. It, it is a progress, so we don't pay yet until they're done. So it's a progress billing, it's a, it's a, it's a.
As they proceed.
So there is a, isn't the, uh, RFP that, uh, you know, that you guys sign? So the progress billing is in the.
Second year.
No, no, progress billing, it, the, the contract is twenty thousand five hundred. So we just, uh, they just in, billed us for eight thousand, the first yard. Second part probably is coming soon and then the end part is after the audit.
That's exactly what I'm asking, how much have we paid out of the contract with them?
I would pay the first rate, so then they're in listening for the second question.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Any other questions last, okay? Thank you, Mr. E., Trustee E.? Madam Chair.
No.
I mean.
It's E.?
Mr. Heriza, I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
Oh, we're brothers.
Madam Chair, do you have any other questions, Madam Chair?
No, I think, I, 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 I think it's, uh, it's worth recognizing the work of the fiscal office. We have four consecutive years of good ex, what is it? Excellent audit. And I, I tell you, I think, uh, we can, we can go, uh, later on, on a special, uh, uh, session. And, uh, just, just to talk about, uh, some of the things that, that needs to be done in recognition of the work that's been done by the fiscal office. Um, you can decide on where that should happen, CEO, but I think it's about time that, uh, recognition is given to where it belongs. Uh, on a four consecutive good audit. And I, I tell you, it, it's not, it's not because we just have this much money to spend. But it's the proper bookkeeping and, and proper assigning of accounts to each category that the money is spent for. And, uh, if you kind of like veer off on some of the use of, 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 or even just, uh. Abuse of, abuse of certain of monies granted to us by the government and both the federal government. Um, you will see that, that we will not be able to have this clean audit. But work is being done tidiously and, uh, and, uh, with, with so much a- attention and so much, uh. Faithfulness to the work that they need to do in, in behalf of GACS. And I think it's worth recognition and, uh, uh, we are being recognized for a clean audit and for all the things that we're doing. Of course, the board has, has plenty to do with all those things, because we won't allow any abuses anyway. But that could be done behind our bu, uh, behind our back and that could be spotted during audit. But none of those things are happening. So we're all very clean in our audit, no hands are, no, no hands are on the cookie jar. No, they don't have, and big hands are on the cookie jar. And we know that for a fact that it's clean audit all the way. So ta, uh, think about it and, and maybe you can, can think on the HR side, on, on, on recognition. That should be given accordingly to the Finance Office, uh, of GACS. Thank you, that's all I want to say.
Miss Jamie did a good job, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I think when we look at the history of the finance of GACS. What a significant, really significant improvement. I mean, documents could not be found, nobody was available to justify anything. And really, now it's all documented. And, uh, we, I personally think that commendation of, of the lead and the Jamie. All working together in a team to give us the clean audit. And that is truly commendable and I, I just wanna make that statement, thank you.
I think that's very true.
Thank you, Trustee Lou, thank you. Go ahead.
Be together. Yeah, thank you.
No hands in the cookie jar?
No hands.
In the cookie jar, guys.
Yeah. Okay, so, any, any question, any more questions? Nothing, okay, thank you, uh, Trustee E.?
Yes.
So.
Got well done, okay, CEO report. And in fact, continuation of our recognition for the team. Yeah, I always say the team, but they always play different hats. Um, and I would like to officially welcome our recruitment officer to report on our ARP and consolidated grant. Um, this is, she has played a very, a big role in handling and monitoring our federal grants. Um, especially our ESF two. Um, so without further ado, Ms. Jamie, can you please report the good news about our balance on our ESF two?
Okay, so. For ARP, nothing has moved on ARP's side. Uh, when we met with GDOE last, they informed us, like Ms. Ann has reported previously, that. GACS will no longer be inputting their own requisitions. What happens now is we will upload the documents and the GDOE will, GD, GDOE will, will be in charge of inputting those requisitions. And, um, right now, the munis system is down while they close all the ESF two purchase orders. So right now, we still have two point nine million in ARP, um, not including the balance that's going to be transferred from ESF two to ARP.
And the deadline?
The deadline for ARP is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so we have plenty of time to, uh, are those already fully requisitioned and spoken for or, uh, encumbered? All the two point fours already encumbered as in zero balance?
We, well, we have the, we have the budget set for each categories. But right now, there's, there's nothing else we can do until the system is up and running and they're able to, they're able to, um.
But, but internally, but internally, are we able to identify the use of the two point four or already?
Yes.
Already identified?
We have identified the whole. Everything is categorized between the equipment supplies and contractual budget.
Good, 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 thank you so much, Ms. Jamie, that's wonderful. So that's, that goes now, uh, the ball is really on the court of PDOE to finally get it going into the munis system. And, uh, it's there, so, uh, when we report, when they report, we will be the, the, the sub-grandy on those monies. So our informations are again clean and clear as to where we have used the money. Because we can be subject to a single audit and, and Trustee Al knows that, because we are recipient more than seven hundred fifty thousand. So keep the, again, keep the records clean, much like what you do with your local funding, okay? I, I saw your, I saw your entrance, uh, your entries on the, uh, federal monies. They're just as great, I mean, they can audit that anytime and they can look at the books anytime. Again, all the monies are accounted for. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Um, I must add that GDOE, the ARP team, ESF two team, actually always uses GACS as an example. So, uh, every time, any Mr. Neil from GDOE would proudly say that, oh, you know what? If you wanted to ex, um, expand your, um, your allotment for your ESF two and ARP, always call GACS, because they have. Everything, so.
Did you record that?
I have that on Zoom.
Make sure, make sure.
We have phone calls from, uh, private schools to ask.
Yes, because that's gonna be our benchmark, you guys are the benchmark.
I'm glad to go into your accreditation, we can.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, you, you can, your GACS record could be useful benchmarking. But I, I tell you, we, we have the same amount of money that we get per student, right? And how we spend it according to what we report in our budget category is, is just exactly what happened. I don't know why they have a, they will have a problem to keeping their books. We are only assigned X amount of money, X amount of category. You don't have, you cannot have, we have surplus, however, because of the way we use our money frugally, right? But if they really have a hard time balancing their, their books and, and reporting some good audits. Uh, there's, there's gotta be something internally that needs to be resolved, obviously. Uh, that's why I always say, don't put your hands in a cookie jar. You can get diabetes for that, you can get diabetes for that.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, oh, my gosh.
Uh, for letter B, RFP for programming and our architectural and engineering design for our future facility, we issued it. Thank you very much, uh, it was, um, sent out, um, on December twenty-second, last Friday. Um, an update, we, we, now, we have an acknowledgement from one, uh, firm already, um, that was sent to the procurement. There's already one acknowledgement, um, hopefully we receive. Um hopefully we receive more, um but it should be. Proceeding.
Work in progress.
Yes, it's a work in progress. Um for letter C, RFP for group health insurance, uh we have closed it um last. Like Friday and we only have one proposal or RFP which we're already working on.
Is it the same one or a new one?
It's the same. It's the compliance. And. And we'll open it and we will get um two of the trustees to work on the review of reviewing of the RFP. Or the purpose, just like how we did it. And that's like we're on schedule.
Yeah, uh uh CEO. I have HR committee chair and one from uh probably from the finance be able to have the uh. The uh the group health insurance uh review process on their proposal.
Yes.
Thank you, because this is all HR related and if if the if the uh. I I could sit with the with the two other trustees on the review process, but. Uh can we just uh trustee Lou and and trustee Haddad, can we just pre had the the uh. The uh.
Opening the.
You're opening up the bid, you know, when when is the, when is the deadline, we closed it already, right?
Yes, ma'am, so first week of January, we have to just package everything to make sure that. And then we'll um set a date for the committee to review the package.
Go along the same line, man, suggest something, chair.
Go ahead.
But.
With the um. Working process on the A and E.
Yes.
Uh may I suggest Dr. Morris to get involved?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
And that would be still the third and fourth week of January.
Cool.
But we need the five in the committee, so. Is that okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we need, we need your input, sure.
We'll assign the committee members accordingly, so we, everybody would have a good chance to review all the proposals. CEO, thank you.
Can you proceed?
CEO.
Yes, student data.
So for student data, um for Jonah, it's going to share it on the screen, but you have the hard copy. Um you have August, September, October, and the most recent is in November. There's a slight um. Decrease in attendance, this is mainly due to the eighteen days only in November. And November, there's a lot who were getting sick, these are excuse absences that we have on record. Although the generally, it's, it went down by just one point eight percent.
Well, that's.
Not, not too.
The uh grade twelve.
And it's some seniors and tenth grade specifically.
There's a decline of about thirteen percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's mainly on the tenth grade and the twelfth grade.
Are, are we doing a good job in tracking down absences?
Yes, and we do have even um it's categorized as excuse absence or unexcused absence in our.
Any ideas or suggestion as to the contributions to that?
That's mainly because there's only eighteen days, so definitely the numbers will decrease. If it eighteen days and there's, oh also, this is the time when they are, because of the holiday. Um they prearrange um absence for the holiday over the weekend, twenty three, twenty four.
So the number that we're seeing is a combination of excuse and.
Unexcused, yeah.
So. Is it safe to assume that the um unexcused absence? It's a lot more than we received, is that it's a lot of unexcused, okay?
Definitely, sure, yeah.
Okay.
But it um it only Renweb um suck um gets the average from both excuse and unexcused. But we, we look at the um unexcused absence as well, but there have, we have um a lot of. You can explode it as you unexc- um excuse absence, I mean, we.
Those um the prearranged absences are there pretty much routinely?
Yes, because we we require um um for an excuse prior to their absence from the parents. And it has to be submitted and signed up by the principal or the assistant principal. Um before they can leave, because we have to provide, the teachers have to provide for their um homework as well. The miss word that they will have.
Do, do you examine the absences, danger of individual students?
That will be on the principal and assistant principal's side, but I have focus on them to make sure that we look into. Um every single.
I mean, if I were a classroom teacher and you are habitually absent in my class, I would not approve really, unless it's. It's a matter of, yeah, life and death situation, I would not approve as a teacher, so where do you draw the line? If 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 three teacher says, no, I don't approve, because this student is absent so many times in my class. Do you honor that or?
No, because it's very well stipulated in our policy that um we have the. Updated policy where it's three, six, nine unexcused absence, then definitely they want to, they want to be absent. Um even three um parties, unexcused parties is already equivalent to one unexcused absence, so that counts as well. Um and that's particularly looked at.
So are we expecting this plan to decrease for this month?
December, I would say there's, it's November, we only have eighteen instructional days, December is only ten days technically, so again, if they already. Um were absent, that will definitely reduce again.
So I think we'll come up with an action plan in January, because it is the holidays, it's fewer, you know, there's all these doctors in. In supply that these acute changes are to be accepted. So when it becomes a, I think, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and with the, all the power out, you don't just miss this.
No, because we don't have to continue, we don't have, we don't have power outages like for more than an hour, so. Remain in.
Please, many thanks, I see.
Yes, I understand.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Just make sure we have uh updated policies on this kind of on absenteeism, on the regulation of the absenteeism. Um I I don't know, we have given trustee uh Shoppers uh a uh. Full uh full copy of our policies, both personnel and the school policies for. For the different aspect of our school operation. If I was about to send you a uh a text message saying that maybe. Uh we should have copies of an updated one, I know what trustee Lou is supposed to be working with trustee uh uh Jergelaf on this. But for now, as is it as it is before any revision, maybe uh. We should get copies, there are some updates we did before and I don't think we were able to get copies of those updated ones. Just make sure we have one, so we can, we can read up on it, we can read up on it and then. Who knows, there might be additional updates that need to happen, there are so many changes happening right now in our school system. Uh but just so we are, we're always on the uh on the know, on our policies, so uh. That would be nice, that could be given to us and and any revision thereof, we get, maybe. We will be forwarded to the board and get acted on, right? Uh for now, uh all complimentary copies should be given to the board, just to get them updated and it be. Be uh on the know on what we have as far as our policies are concerned. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes.
I'm not sure if you're paying attention to, if you look at from August, September, October, and now in November. The general trend from those periods of November. The higher the grades, the higher the absenteeism.
Yes, yes.
So I think we we need to pay attention to that as well. Yeah, if you look back from August, September, October, and November, the same trend.
And it has always been even like five, six years back. Um it's always the high schoolers who be the one, because especially when they turn eighteen. That's, that's always the trend.
Is it because, is it because they work? Is it because they work, you have mentioned something about, because they work.
Last month, when we interviewed that our high schoolers, especially the seniors, they're only half day. So attendance is done in the morning for homeroom, but if they're only attending one class or two classes in. Um in the day, they will only. Only attend that day. So um again, we'll find a way to pull out those um students who don't report to their homeroom. At seven forty-five um to eight fifteen, so that we can take them out of the seniors who are. Um um.
There might be another way of handling that, I mean, you know, especially with with parents. And kids that are having a transportation problem. Uh we need, we need to find a way, I I I don't have an answer right now, but.
I, I'm glad I brought that out because I leave it to you educators to deal with it.
I'm just thinking of the hardship that some of these families will encounter with transportation, you want them to come in for homeroom. And then they don't have, there's a span of no classes, where are they at and what are they doing?
Yeah.
Um whereby if the student comes in, I don't know, as as that teacher, if my student comes in third period. And that's the only period that he misses. We, we should not count that against him for not showing up at home, or we should just kind of like count that as a homeless.
Yes, actually, um even yesterday with our meet, with our meeting with Miss Maria, she handles attendance in school support. Um we found a way to ease the homeroom lack for those who are seniors, because Renweb doesn't count it if it's absent. Um if it's left blank. Um have to look into the details of how Renweb pulls it out, but that's our temporary. Like to make sure we cross check that if the homeroom teacher leaves it blank for that particular senior. Who doesn't have a homeroom class or their next class is first period or second period, then Renweb doesn't count it. Uh but we have yet to really look into the every single one, it's easy to track for now because we only have about fifty seniors. Um. But the ma- majority of the decrease for the seniors in the tenth grade is what we see already is because of uh. Prearranged absence or an um excuse or unexcused absence.
I'm just thinking of a student, particularly the senior, who's only in the school for one period. Let's say, third period, he doesn't have a homeroom. He don't, he doesn't have a homeroom, but shouldn't his person in the third period be counted as one for data collection?
Oh, we we do, although every um it's been a practice that we call the homeroom, right? But we have a practice two, three years ago when we asked every period teacher to take attendance, so we can backtrack and look into that. If they are, if they're present for that period, that their first period or their first block, then we could count that again. As their per- attendance for the homeroom that day.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have started that three, four years ago already, where every, every. Teacher, every period, they have to date their attendance in the high school. Um in secondary at least, I mean, ninth to twelfth grade, so we can look into that, we can go back to that. Um another, because you were thinking, right, how do we um help our seniors or our students who don't have a ride? We also have somehow touched on that because um recently we have um. We gave certificates for twenty-five of our students, high school students, for completing their driver's ed class. So that gives them the opportunity to drive to school. Um instead of relying on their parents, and that was um through our partnership with departments, right? So um right now, as we speak December, um I believe six of our students already are um have a. Private license, um like a. A, an appointment to date their written exam for their, for them to have their driver's license. And this is not only going to help them to come to to school during the regular days, but also to go to trades. And for our college and for your readiness program where they can go into their internship program or. Whenever they are plugged to the community of, or the opportunities that we have.
I'm I'm just wondering how that can relate to the CCR program. With students that need to be at a particular site. And they don't have transportation, but I think that's being addressed, right?
Yes, and Mister um Professor Lou will report on it more later at the curtain. Can you, so we can proceed to the next bullet, um last month, um according to the compliance monitoring office report. Um as of November sixth, I have reported that from thirty-sixth um. March, uh we're down to three noncompliant and now, but this December fifth, as of December fifth, the three is now zero.
Oh, wow.
So we have to give a thank you to our CRT. Um also, I would like to report to you that on December nineteen, twenty twenty-one, uh Miss Maria um attended the. Administrator bootcamp, they call it administrator bootcamp, um. Um which was initiated by the special um education department. Um they had a three-day training uh um at Westin Hotel, so we re- we sent um our representative, Miss Maria, and she completed. And um. It's a great report that we have no longer zero um ID students.
Right, right.
Wasn't it SPED also the one we attended?
Yes.
Oh, and.
At with Ma- Madam Kate, yes. So that was the first invitation of this uh special education um department to all the charter schools. Um but we have been attending their training ever since um the year before. So they even use GACS again as an example that we, they've been supporting us with to be in compliance. And then they held the training officially for all the charter schools. And even the OB, um principal and assistant principal were that, it's a three-day um training.
You know, kudos to, kudos to the SPED group, uh Bamba, their last name, Babauta?
Eldonina, oh, yes.
The, the husband and wife are just really a great team when it comes to the SPED program and all the available training. That they share with GACS is just really wonderful, really, uh because they have so much money that they can use. Uh grants that they are using and they're including the charter school, so you guys don't, we don't take it, we lose out, but. Hopefully, we can always be uh attending and we, they really have so much good word for uh GACS, especially with the CEO. Uh very, very much appreciated that we really are within and even beyond the standards how the SPED. Is 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 done in our school, so uh they're, they really appreciate the board and the CEO in making sure that. The SPED program is carried on to the health properly and, you know, um above reproach cannot be. Cannot be questioned on the lack of monitoring, et cetera, et cetera, you know, uh GDO had big issues on that. Um well, they're a big school and they really have their own problems in monitoring, but. GACS is an exemplary, had exemplary, had had major of.
Yeah, alright.
Major appreciation from GDO's fed uh co- uh coordinators because of how we're doing our program. Of course, it's a small school, but we're on top of everything when it comes to this SPED issue, thank you, CEO.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, thanks, thanks, dear. And thank you, thanks, thanks, dear SPED coordinator.
Partnership with them, they really support us in this.
Are are we accommodating parents who are working parents and cannot come because for whatever reason? Maybe the supervisor did not grant them time to come to accommodate them?
For their meetings? Yes, we do. Okay, yes, we do. Um, so actually, most of the the reports that we have is because parents wouldn't have the time to, um, be present in the meeting. Those are the ones that it's hard to. Um, but because of the coordination of Miss Elonina, she works with the parents, so we come up with and then she even invites, um, Mister Prasastama just to make sure, um, every student has a transition plan as well. So it's an involvement of all the so that's the reason why. The last three that we removed, those are just the reasons the parents can't make it to the meeting, the staffing meeting. Um, but as of December five, those three parents already have completed the meetings.
Oh, so they came.
Oh, that's good.
Are there any issues in accommodating, um, requests that require to be in the I E P? Are there any, are there any pending issues?
No, not anymore. So as of December five, we're all three, we're all off to reach. So the blue ones, um, we only have three. In November twenty-one, we had three. And as, as of December fifth, it's submitted to me, so the three months are now clear. Um, good, sorry, I I think I missed the discipline part, but you have it on your, on your second piece. Sir, second, um. So you have it also in your handouts. You can just go back. So sorry to miss it, but it's gonna be very quick. Um, for the month of November, we have thirty-five referrals total from kindergarten to twelfth grade. And as you would see, the most, um, the behavior referral that we have is for, um, use of technology, which here.
Sorry, I cannot read this. What's this?
The So the most is from the twelfth grade. The use of media. Um, but it's just, um, eleven referrals only, but the most is coming from the twelfth grader, the seniors. Next slide, please, sir. Um, the frequent behavior is media technology being targeted. Again, this is related to their, um, attendance because they're seniors, they don't. And, um, disrespect. Um, this though is from different grade levels, the disrespect, yes. And next slide, sir. Um, referrals by location is in class. So the teachers are submitting the referrals to the, um, assistant principal because of um, non-compliance or mostly disrespect. Or the use of the technology because they would bring out their technology, even if they're not supposed to and not listening to the teaching to the teacher. And, um, next slide, sir.
Non-compliance in terms of?
Of the use of technology because they already know that they're not supposed to bring out their technology. We have computers for every unit, so they don't have a reason to bring out their own cell phones. But they would catch them. That means the teachers going around to check if they're usually that's how, um, teenagers are. They can just bring it out and they would say, I just need to charge my phone.
Teacher can handle that? Do you have to refer to the office?
Um, the policy is at the third offense that you were warned, then you have to put it up, up to. Or they would, um, confiscate it. But the, uh, students now are scared of going to the office, so they would listen more to the same with the, uh, suspended. But from the month of September, we have, it's a big on, it's very the month of September, if you still remember, um, everything, the forty-four referrals is mostly from the use of technology. So it really went down from forty-fourth or forty to, um, just eleven referrals for the knowledge.
So somewhere in that process, are the parents contacted?
Yes, definitely. So the first offense, they will be confiscated. Second, the parents will be contacted and everything comes from the teacher in the classroom. Any question on that one? The day of the week, again, it's always a Wednesday. They're getting bored, I guess. Can proceed now to the, uh, Part E curriculum updates. Um, as mentioned earlier, on January second, we have a training from Mister Joseph Sanchez on on the training for, um, pre and post assessment and how our teachers can, um, teacher makeup for this. Um, simultaneously while we do our every Thursday um, college and career readiness, some meeting, uh, we have combined our um, leadership team as well, um, the ones in charge of, uh, making sure that our curriculum maps are completed for social studies, science and um, so without further ado, I would like to call on our consultant, our college and career readiness consultant, Mister Prasastama to report and give us an update on our WE Care program.
Alright, hello, everybody. Hi, Dana. Thank you. Very well. Happy holidays. Happy holidays to everybody. I'm sorry, like.
I'm gonna attack Bobby you all the way.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Jones, can you put in a slideshow? It's on the bottom. Alright, good morning, everybody, or afternoon. I know we have some new members or one new member here, Dr. Chartliff, uh, and I'll be happy to sit with you to bring you up to speed. But this session is basically an update, so it'll grow really fast, okay? One of the first things I want to bring up is the repackaging of the name because I think it really matters. Uh, before, we were just calling it the CCR program, College and Career Readiness Program. But after the group has gotten together and we argued and we discussed the new, more comprehensive name that captures everything we're doing, uh, we decided on WE Care. And the reason why we're, we are discussing this is because January is when we're gonna have a board work session to adopt the whole program. As you know, the program hasn't been adopted yet. We've been, um, meeting as a working group to bring you all the products you need to know so that we can overall adopt the program as WE Care. And it stands for the Workforce Enabler College and Career Readiness Program. And I think that captures everything. It's, it's all encompassing of everything we're doing to get our high school students ready for the world of work. That is in a nutshell what it is, okay? Next. So as we go through the program, I just wanna bring everybody back into focus of the basic framework, which is phase one, two and three. Uh, phase one is build the infrastructure. Now, we've been doing that since we started in August and we continue to do that even today. And one of the updates you're gonna get today, I don't know if you made copies.
Yes, ready.
Okay, uh, we'll go into that, not in great detail, it's just, uh, for you to look at. And when we meet in the working session in January, um, I'll go into it in more detail, okay? Next. So we're doing that next. Phase two is synchronized and plugged. And this is where we are today, the synchronized and plugged phase as well as still building the infrastructure. Now, one of the slides I should put in is the timeline. Everything we're doing this year will have an impact. This is year zero, consider it year zero. Year one is when the eighth graders come into ninth grade this coming year. Uh, that is year one because those freshman students are not gonna be year one of the program. Uh, so the students in the tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade are year zero students and their legacy, so they're they're getting the full comprehensive program, uh, put into one year it's worth. Um, so we're not gonna get good data from that. The data we're gonna start collecting is year one, uh, the eighth graders coming to the ninth graders. I ho- I hope that, I should have made a slide for it, but that's how you have to look at this program, okay? Next. So here's what we've done so far, and I think the most important thing here is the establishment of a working group because this is really the group carrying and making uh, preliminary decisions that are brought to the board for final policy adoption. That's critical. And the I C A P is the other one. That is a GAC-specific, um, document that we are using throughout this whole program. Every ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders will have an individualized college and career action portfolio. Alright, and in the work session, we'll get into the details of that. One of the most important thing of the I C A P is probably filling out the F A S S A so that every student in the GACs community graduating will have a F A S F A, whether they're going to college or not. You will fill it out and get ready. Coincidentally, I I can't believe the legislature is considering making a law so that G O E, old G O E students will have a F A S S A. It's a bill right now, uh, hasn't been passed. I don't know where we are with it. But regardless of whether they get it through or not, uh.
We're already on it.
We're way ahead of that and I the program and your school, GACs, will be one of the cutting edge tip of the spear schools that are actually putting a comprehensive plan individualized for the student as they enter the job market. That's our goal. So whether they go into college, uh, the trades, the military or straight into the job market, they're very poised based on their I C A P to go into any of those. Or multiple, they can get a part-time job and college. They're ready for that. Okay, next. And here's what we've done so far as an update. Um, develop the draft policy. I think you have it. Yeah, so the policies is being discussed at the working group level. Uh, I think there's some stuff that we need to clean up on the policy. Uh, several of the individual members feel that the policy is too comprehensive and does not give the flexibility. Um, I'd like the board to look at it when the working group gets done with it. Uh, and the policy is complemented by what you have before you which is the course description. Uh, the course description, I think, is very comprehensive. It builds a very good groundwork for the mapping, which I will present to the working group in the next week. So not only are you gonna have course maps for your other core subjects, we consider the WE Care program a core subject. And that's what we're gonna present to you. One of the other things that the working group is gonna present to you during the work session is an increase in credit. Not only are we gonna be like the other schools twenty-four credits, we consider the core offering of the WE Care program um, to be at the level of an additional two credits. Because we wanna give them credit for going into, um, doing enrollment, the trades, um, having an actual job and being in that environment as credit worthy. So your career endorsement certificate will capture all of that, okay? Next. So phase two, we are actually synchronizing and plugging our students into the work community. And by that, I mean, uh, U O G, G C C, Department of Labor, private sector. Um, I have in touch in the hotel and tourist industry, but it's my next, um, my next salvo into going into the work community. The military, our students just took the ASVAB and waiting for the results. Those who passed, I'm gonna start connecting them with their choice of military service. It'd be very, very, uh, focused. So the student has to make, let me know which service they like to go into. That's the recruiter. I will sit them down and find. So our program is not, uh, a full, one-size-fits-all. Uh, they tell me what they want and I match the industry with what they want so that we're not wasting time of the students, uh, like, not everybody's going to college. I don't expect to take everybody to, uh, U O G or G C C. Only those students who have expressed that interest will be going on that field trip. The others are gonna be very, um, specific. One of the things I'm setting up in January, we have one student that really expressed a high degree of interest in joining to the medical field. He wants to be a doctor. He's already, he expressed that, and he's only in the ninth grade. He's one of the top performing students, by the way. Um, and his mom is your P T O president right now. So his name is Dallas and I, I've linked up with a he's doing his residency in San Francisco. He's here on vacation. Uh, he's a local student graduated from Dodia. Um, but he's very interested in meeting with the student. The student wants to go into thoracic surgery. It's amazing, these are in a pit of that, um, specific career interests. This, uh, resident student has not chosen yet his specialty, but he's going into one of the surgery, internal medicines. Um, but why I want to link them together is because he just finished his college at UC Davis. He's, he's at San Francisco doing his residency. Uh, he got picked up by the military. He's a commissioned officer because he needs to pay for it. So I need to link this student on the pathway that he took as one of the opportunities available to him. And your student right now is a straight A student going into that field. Uh, other students who have expressed interest in going into cosmetology, I've got two, uh, I've got two hairdresser and cosmetologists who are interested in coming over and doing a sit-down with our students, who are interested in that field. GCC is another one we're gonna be looking at. So we're plugging right now, it's happening. This is a very focused program. Again, it's not, not a one-size-fits-all student. We're looking at their interests and matching them with the industry. That's your program right now, okay? Next. So phase three is the data collection, the monitoring, the evaluation. And this is when I bring the data to the working group and show them the trends. We're gonna look at some data. And all the data that we collect is being stored into our new data system. And right, the, the epicent, very appropriately named. Cause that's where, that's where the buzz and the direction of decisions are gonna be stemming from data. We are data-driven school, and everything we do, especially with this program, is gonna be data-driven, okay?
This is area of work, too.
Yeah, I know, so Dr. Chergeloff, and I, I know his dad personally. And he's a chief. A chip off the O block. Okay, next. So I always wanna put this slide up because it centers us on what our college and career program is all about. And I call it the four pillars. If you adopt it, it'll be the four pillars of a college and career-ready student. And that is achieve proficiency in the core academic, acquired knowledge to navigate and transition into post-secondary opportunities. They built a foundation of self-awareness. This is the socio-emotional side, we're not discounting that. And they've developed a strong set of characteristics to be in the twenty-first century global community. So always go back to the four pillars of why we are here. I, I'm asking Anne to start changing the paradigm of their, of the teaching staff. Yes, you're a first-grade teacher, yes, you're an eighth-grade teacher, but the bigger goal is to get them ready for the world of work. Whether it's college, the trades, military, or straight into the job market, your specific piece as an eighth-grade math teacher has consequential effects on how that student is prepared for college and career ratings. So always go back to the four pillars. Now, there's no other school on Guam, and I haven't seen other schools in the state who have focused on the four pillars of why their institution exists. So we can always look at this as the far twelfth-grade horizon and beyond. This is what we're all about, okay?
We have programs for each of the program.
Yes.
We have laid down the foundation already for the programs for each of the four.
Yep, everything is in place right now, and that's the academic standard, socio-emotional standard, your character development, those are the soft skills, the leadership course, and then the college and career standards. Okay?
Yeah, I actually care as the socio-emotional standards, the program. So that's just another work for emotional and intelligence that the US education system I just bought up recently because of the pandemic. So you guys have an EI program for the students?
Yes, we do, and that started three years ago already. It's our wayfinder. It, it was born in the San Francisco University for K-12 schools. So it's a research-backed lessons and program for socio-emotional. And it starts from kindergarten. Our kindergarten graders are, they have their hard copy materials in it, but for six to eight, they, they can be accessible through.
It's possible that I can see it, so I'm, I'm an expert in EI. And I was talking to Mr. Sanchez for an EIPD for all the school principals and then work our way down to these students. Yep, but I didn't know that we already have one.
We do, and it's very important to have an EQ score prior to stepping into the world of work.
Yeah.
Because we wanna make sure emotionally and socially they're prepared for what's ahead of them.
Right. In the working world. So I, I, you know, let me just add on that the purpose is that there's a significant causation that the higher the I, the I of a student from K-12 going into college or the workforce, it's twenty-five to forty percent. How smart you are is fifteen percent. So if we have a network, we should really focus on the EI. Yeah, and then the US education system, just this year announced that there is a significant correlation between how good the preparation of the learning from an emotional approach in K-12, this play is a good factor in their success in college. So I just thought this was amazing. It's, it's already been said from the US department, and now GACs move forward. And truly, it's.
Yeah, they probably got our playbook, but they're still behind, they're still behind, yeah.
The first time we, we launched the program, wayfinder, it's when we first, I, when we first submitted it under the ESF two.
Right.
Pro, ESF two budget, because the focus was on emotional, socio-emotional lessons. So the first year, they were able to pay for it in, under ESF two. Alongside with the wayfinder that I mentioned, it's the hard copy, which we call second step. That was in, through also the, we, we acquired it also through the funding of ESF two. This year, we were supposed, we submitted it under ESF two, but they closed down, there's no system. So we had to, we had to cover it locally. But it's already in place, and actually, because it's gonna be transitioned to ARP, alongside with it, it's also the socio-emotional for the employees, which is wayfinder for adults. Prior to that, we already have every PD session, also not just taking care of the students, but also with our employees, the staff, we have our one-hour session every PD for the, for the employees. So that's already in place two years.
Two years, so that means we're two years ahead of the US education system.
And it's the data that's really gonna be the tail of the tape. Because how well are we using that information holistically to build our program and get our college, I mean our career and college program off the ground?
Does that mean we have a benchmark for the students and principals and teachers, EI?
Yes, I believe so, because we do have the waypoints. Weightpoint is how we key back on the, on the pre and post.
Here's to see that, cause I'm, I wonder what definition of EI that means. There's different model?
I can give the.
Oh, okay. Let me address this to Bob. Let's be, when you said about the bill, right? Remember they're preparing the bill that we, the law, the center, we gotta do it, the four standards. If they pick that up, can we be the one to be like a patent, say that we're the ones that did it? No, I'm serious.
That is true.
That's true, because it came from us, your ideas, it's your ideas, it should be patented.
So if that's why you do that, it's the new story. I know it's a lot of.
Yeah.
Right, let's write up the nice first words.
Well, I think our meeting with the chair of the Education Department is.
Yeah, yeah.
Very first, that has to take place, I can't see it any other way.
I agree with you.
Looking in that way.
Yeah, because, you know, somebody's gonna steal our ideas, and yet it came from us, and we're step ahead.
Yeah.
And I understand where you're coming from, but, but in order to solidify that, I think that once we're done, and we're comfortable, and this is what you really want to do, we need to have a meeting.
Okay.
I, I think if I may say, the career, the career on technical education is, is, is all over the nation. I think we are the school that, that is aggressively picking it up and putting it into full force, right? So I, I don't know the, I don't know about patent, patent, trusty, I'm sorry to. I'm, I'm sorry to say, we can, we cannot get it, we cannot get it patented or anything like that, but I think we should be able to, to claim it as, as one that is solid. And, and include it in any, in the accreditation report that we, we, we are the only one that solidifies the foundation of current and technical education. And it is true, because everybody else is weak on this. So solidify it as part of the program that we are very, very strong on. And of course, the data will support that, it's about data, data, data. Robert, it's all about data, listen to Mr. Chergeloff, the dad. It's all gonna be data, data, data. And as long as the strong data reports that, that we are strongly, we have strongly launched and adopted and successfully graduated students that, that choose their career in technical education. We have the, we have the, the evidence to support that. Patent unfortunately.
We are spoke GAC.
I, I think, I think there's a way to, to really kind of, I think there's a way to kind of really own it. And, 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 and the only way we can do that is really support the program. The process, the trustees will support the program. And worked together with, with the consultant and the CEO, launched it actively. And the, the, the measure really would be when you have graduates that are really, that are going to be successful in the field that they use in, in current and technical education. So now, now is the adoption, the board has to formally adopt after it's finalized. And then you have a solid proof that it is something that was adopted and solidified by GACs. Sorry, trustee Al.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying.
No patent thing. It's, it's, it's.
Your ideologies, why not?
Why, yeah, I know, my school is very solid in the same thing, also in the different, on the very solid field in allied health. I tell you, the whole nation is, is towards this thing now, because not everybody will get a college degree. So we're approaching at the right time and the right, and, and the right approach, you know, to make sure that the parents are aware of it, that the community is aware of this, and so on, so on and so forth. I am very, very excited by all of this, to the point that I know that the next building that will have to be owned by a GAC, will have all of this amenities, not amenities, but call it as there are rooms that will actually house all of this different discipline that we're hoping we can, we can launch. So the actual work will be done in the actual site, but the, the actual lessons and, and training will be on, in a laboratory, on a clinic, on a, on, on engineering design, kind of like, you know, rooms, as, as so and so forth. So as you talk and I listen, I could only visualize the, the next GAC's campus will be doing, doing a lot of this thing. The heart and soul poured into all the different areas of discipline and career that our students will have to go for moving, moving forward. Thank you so much, trustee Al. Thank you, good idea.
I, I just, I just wanna comment about Al's point. Your program though, although throughout the nation, CTE is a big push, there are specific components within the GAC's program that's not in the other programs. So to Al's point, once you adopt this, this is a very specific, focused, individualized program. It's not a big CTE, everybody's pushed into it. We are actually, because of your size, and it's, the matter, you brought this up many times, because of the size of the school, we are able to do something like this. It's very hard to do this at a GW or a JFK.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't have the resources and the focus to do this. Right now, it, it's so opportune that your, your size allows you the individualized program, the four pillars, the ICAP. It's not being done at other schools. That makes it very specific, and you're filling a niche in your program that needs to be filled. And your, your students, the outcome's the same in every CTE program. How many of the students go into the careers and are successful? That's the final analysis, but how do we get them there? That is your playing to thing, and I think what Mr. Papiza is getting at. So once you adopt this, it's specific to your program, and you should be very proud of it. But it's a collaboration of the working group that has flushed this out. It's not your contractor that has put it on the table and everybody agreed to it. This, there are several evolutions to this, to get to this point. And I, I think, and I applaud the working group and their input, okay?
In other words, GACs is a pioneer. That's what, that's the word.
Yeah.
We are the pioneers to this. It's the, the model.
Of the WE Care, yeah.
Of the WE.
I mean, any, anybody in DOE can, they can look at our model. But it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Like you said, the population, you know, two thousand students.
And the good thing about it is the kids at very young age now, is focusing on what they really want to do. It is that exactly, I mean, so outstanding progress.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna do one of the national.
Yeah, so I, again, you know, I, I tried to take myself out of it. I am your contractor, I'm just putting the guardrails, the guide rails on. But you guys, the board, this is your program. You adopt it, you push it, you believe in it. This is, you know, when they, when the other schools hear about what we're doing, I think it will be adopted as a best practice standard. So, yeah, this is the GACs WE Care program. This is our part of the.
No, Robert, we can have a press conference and you speak on behalf of the board. The board will authorize you to speak whenever we have.
I think, no, that's what.
Really, that's very, very.
I think the board will do okay.
Serious, no. The board will ask you to.
Once you, I, I think you should solidify that, solidify the whole thing. This, this, this has not come to the board, it has come to us bits and pieces. But we have to solidify all of things, and then the press, the press release should happen. Because for now, we, we saw and we know where it's gonna, what's gonna happen. But once we solidify it, and, and rightfully, that should be the, the place, that would be the right way, the right approach to do it. Share, share that with the community and tell them exactly what we're doing. But let's solidify this process and then get it all approved by the board, so, by the Board of Trustees. So it's, it's one adopted, duly adopted by, by, by GACs and move on from there.
Yep. Yes, next slide. Again, just to bring everybody back to the goals and objective of the WE Care program. So a hundred percent, everybody's gotta be all in. A hundred percent of all eighth graders will be exposed to seventeen clusters. When you get to ninth grade, you pick four cluster career interests. And then as you progress, ten, eleven, twelve, until you, in the twelfth grade, you should already know what your career, strong career interest is gonna be. You're not still fooling around with what you wanna do. And then we plug you in at that point. And second semester of your senior year, you're out there in the industry of your choice. You're either a trades academy in the afternoon, or you're GCC, UOG, or you're in.
Military.
The military, already recruited, because you can be recruited, and you're getting ready to fly off and do your career. Yep. Okay, that's the plan.
I wanna follow that thoracic guy or whatever you said. No, sure, sure, he's, he's one of a kind.
That's serious.
If the other schools, once they see this, they want to.
I I think it's a very achievable. Based on the resources of your school. This is where we need to push our kids to really get to that point where I know I wanna do this. This is what I wanna do.
And the commitment.
Yeah, that's important. One, one of the things I failed to mention is I will be meeting with the parents, starting in January of all the seniors. And sitting down and talking to them about the career choices of their kids. Before they actually launch into. So that's a very key component, and I was telling, and as we build the infrastructure, there's got to be. Someone on her staff. Doing what I'm doing right now as a contractor, because I'm I'm building my off ramp. For someone to come in and that's part of the infrastructure.
And that someone could be you, right?
Be like, Mr. Charlof, just come in and help, whenever. But I I will be always available, whether I'm contractor or not, but someone has to be. Here talking to the students and the parents and the handoff. Uh, you guys were talking earlier about sped students and the transition plan. I've met with all the sped students who are transitioning this year. Uh, my goal is to connect with this in the industry. They will be in a job before they actually graduate. That is the goal. So.
You're blazing the trail.
Okay, next. And then the ICAP, I cannot stress enough. You've got IEPs for your sped students, you've got the ICAP for all the students. In their college and career rankings. So. Uh, again, talk about blazing the trail, this is a blazing. Of that trail into the college and career post-secondary opportunities. And this is a very comprehensive one. I I gotta give you, in the work session, I will let you see how comprehensive the ICAP is. Uh, and why it is going to work. And the students are doing it already. Third quarter, before third quarter, parent teacher conference, all students in the high school will have their ICAP done. Because this is what we want the teachers to start talking to the parents about. Not only that he got an eighty-five in the math quiz, all that is passe. We should be talking about, this is what we need to do to get your child college and career ready. Uh, look at the bigger picture, right? Um, zoom out from that one test or that homework he did turn in. What does, what impact does that have on his college and career range? Okay, next.
This is the DNA, the real DNA.
So, these are the fourth, four domains in the GACS DNA. College, apprenticeship, military, immediate job. This is where we plug into, to get our students into that world of work. It's gonna be one of these. There's no option of, I don't wanna do anything, it's, I just wanna stay home. That's not an option. We talked about this in our initial brief. Um, if that is really your goal, you should go to another school. That has that track. That track is not one. That is not, you know, and I need to talk to the parents about that. Because you should not, as a parent, be agreeable to, I wanna stay home and do nothing.
That's right.
That is not one of our core values, right?
But I, I think there is, I don't know, it's hard to find a parent that.
I haven't encountered in my eighteen years as principal and eight years as teacher.
What is, what is that one done? Front of the military? No, the one in the. They're in the water.
Close under uh, homeland, they're not military. But Space Force is, and I need to put that up there, you're right. No, they're their own branch, just like the army, air force.
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at, the Air Force came from the army and the Marines came in.
But they're all, they all get their budget, so you follow the money, they get their individual appropriations. Space Force has, and I look at, there's a four-star general in charge of that branch. So they sit on the joint, uh, chief of joint staff.
I don't know if they're proud or tired.
President Trump get real good. Creating the Space Force.
Apprenticeship, sir, you know, you have GPA, GWA. Uh, apprenticeship program and source na- the naval facility.
Will be plugging them in into all that. So this is a little stats on our prelim- preliminary surveys, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Uh, out of the hundred and eighty-seven respondents. Eighty-six of the hundred and eighty-seven wanna go to college. So we're, we have to get them there. Um. And that, to me, that's, that's gonna be the hardest thing right now. Because they all have to be math, reading, language arts ready, right? You can don't say, I wanna go to college and wham, you're in college. Um, you've, we've got to set them up for that success, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, see, and that's weird because apprenticeship is where the good jobs are. Um, so we've got to start asking our students why they wanna go to college. When, I just talked to Bert Johnson, when I went over there to take the pictures of our students attending. Trades Academy for the winter session. And he said, this is his perception. We've been talking up college. For the last three decades, that that's the way to go. We have not been talking up. Apprenticeship, construction, plumbing, air conditioning. Where are the big performing, high-paying jobs? Just for a plumber to come to my house and look at that leak is already a hundred dollars. Just to come and look at it. To work on it is a different price. So, you know, I keep telling these kids. You really want to go into apprenticeship. Um, because that is where air-conditioned, car-conditioned mechanics.
All trades.
All the trades over there set their prices. You wanna come to my shop to get your air condition fixed, this is what it's gonna cost. And you get, the certifications are great and they're transferable from state to state.
Yeah, that's true. That's where my husband went, Navy, Francis.
Yeah, okay, next. So this is how we're plugging in. Into the greater, and this is phase two, which we are doing now. Okay, and I'll put in the rest that we're, as we get plugged into a certain industry, I'll be capitalizing on that. As part of the, of the data. Um, recently, we had a pilot. His last name was Charlof. With Dominic Charlof, very impressive individual, uh, homegrown, it's Mister Charlof. Brother of Doctor. Here's, I mean, Forrest Charlof, uh, is a pilot with American Airlines, right? And we have several students that express an interest of becoming pilots. So that's how we plug him into. So these students will hopefully stay in touch with, uh, Dominic. As they progress through this program, ready to go into college or straight into that industry. Um, to get that career interest fulfilled. So we're looking at that. The doctor is just another one who are taking pictures. And has got a marketing plan. Every time we, we have a session. We capture that and we write it up as part of our evidence into our students moving into the industries.
They have already, um, posted it in. Um, for the first month when, uh, they're.
So, I had the opportunity to go just recently and take these pictures. These are our students attending the Trades Academy, um, for the winter session. We got, just, just look at the five, we got more than five over there. The others were taking tests so they couldn't come for the pictures. But this will grow, I can assure you, in the next four years, tr- these five students will grow into fifty.
So you're doing recruitment for them also.
UOG, GCC, the private sector. I'm doing everything. Yes, that's part of it.
Any given you any feedback so far on how they're doing?
Uh, our kids are doing very well, as a matter of fact. I I sat with Bert Johnson. They, they love our students, but. Uh, so we will get a written, uh, summary of how they're doing. Um, Vince, uh, the toll kit. Uh, senior wants to go into the military, he's already picked the marines. So he took the aspect, he was very serious about it. I wanna plug him in as soon as we get. Josh, uh, the student on the left. Uh, wants to go to college, but he also wants to get a job. To support that college endeavor. So. We're doing good. Caleb, uh, next to Vince. He hasn't decided yet, but he said he wants to be an entrepreneur, he wants to build a business. His dad owns a tow truck company, wants his son to go into that. Not really sure he wants to. He said the mon- the money's great, but he wants to explore. He's still a junior right now. But he's been coming almost weekly to talk to me about his career. It's good, cool. Okay, next. Next one is the Department of Labor, they're at GCC going through. Um, their workforce development courses. So these students, they're again doing great. I talked to the instructors up there. Our kids are very pliable and flexible, they want to succeed. So they're there right now.
How many of them total, about fifty rats or more?
I I didn't get the specific number because labor wasn't there, but Gianna should have that specific number. We'll get, we'll get, uh, the total number as we come into January. Okay, next, is probably the last slide. Um, these are students already plugged into the community, they're, they got their part-time job. Uh, and they do want to go to, Rihanna wants to go into cosmetology, I'm plugging her into that. Russell and Evan, uh, Russell wants to go to college, but he wants a part-time job to support that. Evan also wants to go to college, but Kino wants to be a nurse, so we'll be plugging her into that. Uh, off the twenty-eight or thirty students projected for graduation this year. Um, half of them already have jobs. So, and they all wanna go to college or military or apprenticeship, so. Individually, as a source of data. We will have all our students plugged into the one of the four domains before they graduate, okay? That is the plan, and I think we're well, we're well into that already. Okay, so this is just a summary. When we meet for the work session, I'll have more data for you. And this is the informed part, the policy and the course description and the twenty-six credits.
When the workshop, um, we're gonna schedule it all.
Okay, any questions? I'm very proud to be a part of the, the movement of the, the We Care Program. I think, and you're right, Al, it it's very tailored and specific, maybe that's why. It doesn't sound like the regular CTE program. It's tailored to GACS.
No, no, no school has the ICAP, I know that for a fact. No school has.
I'm, I'm just.
For those academies.
Have to be selected, like.
Right, and in that case, I work with the congressman because he has five slots every year. From Guam, one per service. And if I get a student who really expressed that interest. Um, he will be the first one I'll be contacting, contacting.
It's a, appoint, appoint you by.
One of a kind.
Yeah, pioneers, yes, cool. Isn't it the Department of Labor who claimed that, uh. They recruited the high, Ghana Academy Charter School is the highest number of.
Yes, it was Department of Labor.
And that no other public schools too, the public schools of private schools.
Called charter school because they, they got their ARP, whatever it's called, see?
Madam Fay, this is your great child, Rome Ra.
Right, Madam Fay?
Their guys are moving it, but if you know, you could only think about it and then the launching and and the actual work. Starts right soon, but grateful to all the ideas, uh, thank you, uh, uh, and I know, uh. Mister Chagulap is a big part of this, and Robert. Um, this is really where the whole world and nation is going to, the trend is there. But we're first on the ground, so that's very, very, uh, that's laudable and and we just, I, we just want to see all of this. Slowly but surely, product of our school, uh, going to their, decide to their choice of career, uh, successfully, right? So that's all what we want, we want to, you know, what we want to do with our children, because they're not gonna be all the high school graduates and. And we'll do nothing in the community. We hope the best for all of them. So it's really all our efforts together and network with people and and organization that we could tap. To put our students into the apprenticeship program. There's a whole lot of money sitting with Department of Labor under the apprenticeship program. That has to be topped at all times. They're always looking for partnership between a, an organization, nonprofit or profit organization. For students or apprentices to work under them. So it depends on whatever trade, it could be on some hospitality, and and you can teach them how to apply for those apprenticeship program. You can work, you can wor- work with them and and with the Cooperation Department of Labor, the employer. And Department of Labor have established that apprenticeship, uh, relationship, so they can bring in people in their, in their respective operations that that. That can work and be paid accordingly and and get trained on the job that you want them to be. Uh, I know that there are several businesses that already have apprenticeship program, mostly the construction pro- the construction companies have apprenticeship. Program under Department of Labor, so they get compensated for anybody or any referral of any apprentices that wants to go in. That's what, that's what you wanna solidify, that the employers really have an apprenticeship program with Department of Labor, so they don't have. To fork out the money for the apprentices. Uh, usually they will pay them the first ninety days and get reimbursed a hundred percent by Department of Labor. On the money that they have, uh, paid the apprentices, so it's a very good program, you really have to tie it, no other way to do it, but. Launch the CTE and tied up with apprenticeship program is a win-win situation. The students will be happy, they'll be kept, they'll be trained, they will have a lifetime career of, of that's something that they choose to to have for the rest of their lives. But definitely a start, you know, and you're starting them really good, so. Thank you, CEO, thank you, uh, Robert, for all of this put together. Thank you, C E O. Thank you, uh, Robert, for all of this put together. And, uh, and the trustees is here in behalf. I know that we're all in support of, of what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, Robert, uh, baked, uh, cake this morning, pumpkin.
Sorry, I don't wanna pass, I don't wanna pass my bugs on you guys. I was down all day yesterday, so. Yeah, yeah, they will see you before New Year, hopefully. Thank you, guys, all. Thank you, thank you again. Thank, thank you, Mister Chagulap Senior. Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, yeah, hopefully, yeah, I, I finally, I finally broke the fever this morning, so. Um, yeah. But thank you, Ken. Let's party for New Year. Let me know what you guys are doing for New Year. Thank you, Principal Sanchez. Thank you for being there today. Good morning to you. Jamie, thank you, and Miss Badet, thank you, and Jonas. Okay, let's go to the new business. I thought they're already calling for a joinment. Go ahead, thank you. Sorry. New business, go ahead.
This was already submitted, um, based on our work session. Uh, work session on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, so you have a package of, uh, the budget. Merit in, um, the decision package and the budget itself for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, um, it's just for your approval, um, on the air, but this is everything that, um, we discussed during the work session on December eleventh.
Okay, we need a motion, and we need a motion to approve that.
Yes.
So I can then, a motion to approve our.
I'll make a motion. Remove the budget for five, twenty-five.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor that we approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budgets. Mister Ivie-san, second it by Mister Iblot, okay? All those in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all ayes, approved, motion approved.
Thank you.
Um, that's what I asked.
Do we want to go ahead and going to executive, executive session to discuss the management decision?
The Madam Chair didn't get a chance to read here.
Oh, okay, so shall we hold back until?
It's really up to you, so I'm.
Yeah.
Madam Fay, did you want to move to executive session for the M D N A, if you have? Do you have a copy of Madam Chair? Or do you wanna talk all that?
Uh, Dusty Al, I want you to take a lead of the M D N A.
Okay.
Do you need to, you need to go on executive session?
We don't need to. It's nothing in math, I mean, that affects personnel.
I, I wanna, I wanna be able to have the, uh, the, uh, the audit committee chair to have the executive session. When if you have, we have to discuss our, our, um. Yeah, our, our, our audit.
Okay.
Dusty Al, do, I, I, do you wanna go and exit into executive session to discuss? Or do we have anything to discuss?
No, she, she, no, the Madam Chair should question the executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let's go, let's go.
To go into discuss this, okay?
Yes, we get out of the.
We need to have a motion then to, to go to executive session.
I made a motion to, to go, uh, executive session.
Okay, and there's a motion, is there a second to that motion? Okay, we can second it.
Recording, recording.
Okay, Mister Iblot? Okay, okay, we are now going into executive session, Madam Chair.
Uh, the recording.